That's an estimated revenue of $6.3 million. When we look at our proposed rates, we not only assess our rates based on the property class, so residential, commercial, ag, or personal property, but we truly levy the rates based on our fund. So general fund, special revenue fund, or teachers' fund, our debt service fund, and then our capital projects fund. When we look at our operating levy, it's actually made up of the general, the special, and the capital projects fund. The debt service fund is always separate. Our proposed operating levy rates are as appears, so you can see that our proposed operating levy for residential rolls back by 23 cents, so 2306. Our ag rate rolls back by 2.1420. Our commercial rate increases by 1539. Remember that that has the 20 cents recoupment in it. And our personal property rate increases by 1331. So even with our blended overall rate, we still have a rollback of 955, so .0955. So these rates are operating, so they exclude the 49 cents for debt service. When we look at our total rates by property class, so this adds in the 49 cents for debt service, once again, because the 49 cents is remaining the same, our total blended rate actually goes down to $4.2549 versus the $4.4880 from last year, so a decrease of the 955. The 2017 rates also include a partial recoupment from the prior years, based on our previous numbers. Today, I want to mention also, included in the debt service, that is the amount that's levied in order to pay off our general obligation bonds. Today, of note, we actually had a sale of a bond refunding today, just over 28 million in newly issued bonds. We saved over $7.7 million with that, and we had a net interest rate of 1.17%. So that was a 17.7% return. So certainly, hopefully, our taxpayers will see that we are maximizing the tax dollars. What that enables us to do is use more spending on additional projects then, so to upkeep our property, to have energy-saving equipment in our schools, so that we can remain good consumers of energy and save some operating dollars with that as well. So our proposed rates by fund, so as you recall, it still has the same blended rate of the 4.2549, but it's broken out by fund. So this year, we're proposing that we actually assess 5 cents in the capital projects fund. As you know from our budget presentations, our capital projects fund has been depleted over the years. With the recoupment, this will allow a buildup of that fund and then lessen our need for transfers in the future. We've promised you in the past that whenever we utilize recoupment, that we will utilize that to build fund balances and not just to add additional expenditures to our budget. Besides having recoupment, we also have a voluntary rollback on our residential rate. When we set our residential rate in 2014, which was the last time we had reset our rate, we had a rollback of 2382, or approximately $6.2 million. The recoupment calculation actually increased that voluntary rollback. So a portion of the recoupment is actually going to supplement for those reduced revenues. So some of it will actually be used as operating revenues this year, but next year, because it's a non-reassessment year, we will have the ability to reset that rollback. So as a comparison then, in total revenues, these are at 100% revenue, so not with a collection rate. You can see the breakdown. Total reassessment growth allowed, 3.5 million. The recoupment calculation change in the operating revenue was a reduction of just at 2.8 million. New construction, 1.6 million if you round it. Increase in debt service, 1.6 million, and recoupment of the 5.8, so a total of 9.7 million. The revenue amounts are based on the taxes levied, so not collected. And recoupment is a one-time revenue source, and it'll help to meet our fund balance growth targets without negatively impacting our student learning. This next slide shows our operating property tax revenues, so essentially just excludes the increase from debt service. So part of that recoupment is replacing revenues lost from the recoupment calculation, and a portion of the recoupment will be levied to the capital projects fund, as mentioned previously, to assess with the growth in that fund. So our breakdown involved our changes in the residential rate. So last year's operating residential rate was 3.7263. The debt service, sorry, that should have been 216 debt service of 49, so last year we levied $4.2163 for the residential rate. Net impact from reassessment growth was a rollback of .2162. The impact from the recoupment calculation was a rollback of 1131. The 2017 recoupment that we're applying here is .0987. So our proposed residential rate is 3.9857, and once again, that is a rollback in our residential rate. So what does that impact on our homeowner? Our homeowner has two sources of taxable ownership. They're, presumably, their home or their place of residence, their real estate, and of course, their personal property, which would be the cars that they own. The change in the rate certainly was a decrease of the 2306 in the residential rate and an increase of the 1331 in the personal property rate. If we look at a 9% growth in our homes, the average home value increased from $250,000 to $272,500. That assessed valuation on that home is at 19%, so that moved that to $51,775. At the tax rate, that is Parkway tax dollars of $2,063. Personal property then would, on average, was about a 2% decrease. So if the average was $15,000 last year, it becomes $14,700 this year. Personal property is assessed at 33%, so $4850 becomes the assessed value, times the rate is $211 in tax dollars. So total Parkway taxes, on average, $2,0274 compared to last year's of 2,011, is actually an increase of $63. So with inflation being 2.1%, truly having a 2.9% increase is not a bad increase at all. It is still good use of money. And then Parkway's property taxes represent about 50 to 55% of the resident's total tax bill, depending on their taxing jurisdictions. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Are the golf courses still considered agricultural property?
Yes, they are.
And is there any hope of ever getting that changed in the legislature?
Not at this moment in time. We haven't heard any kind of discussions on that.
That's something that would be worthwhile for us to put in our legislative platform?
We could, because certainly we do have some golf courses that have increased in...
We have two that I can think of. We have Westwood and Belle Reve.
And Belle Reve, that is correct.
Okay.
We also have the large Hunter Farm, so, and that's not a golf course, but we do have some farms in our district as well.
I mean, if it's legitimately agriculture, then it's legitimately agriculture, but I see those cows grazing at Hunter Farm, but a golf course really isn't.
Right, that is a mode of income.
And I noticed that you're using the average market value, $272,500. So I just, 9% growth, that's a lot.
So overall, our residential grew just about 10%, so that is why I use the 9% there.
So is that a trend in the whole St. Louis area that you know of?
At least in this area it was. It necessarily was not the case in North County, which we all know that some of the property values have decreased, but certainly in this part of St. Louis County and much of St. Charles County, growth has been exponential like that.
Well, because the houses are really selling fast.
Exactly. It is certainly a seller's market.
Right. Okay, thanks. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Now we're going to call for citizens' comments, but there doesn't seem to be anyone signed up for that. So 6.0, we're going to adjourn the tax rate hearing. May have a motion and a second that the annual tax rate hearing be adjourned. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6.0. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock.
I play pressure right back. He's got, you know, 35,000. I says, you gotta come down from your 24,000. So he comes down, still not gonna, it feels so good to be able to, because usually I'm too late to, I'm not usually able to deal with it.
So what time, providing that I'm able to go to the Ozarks, what time are we planning on leaving?
What time can you leave?
I'm off that day.
Oh, we can leave by 4:00, 4:30. Kim, I think, is off too. You're on. Beth's gonna leave, she's off, so we can leave.
I'm working from home, so I can leave whenever.
All right, let's see what I got.
You're off that day?
I'll be busy praying at Supo.
That's right.
Yeah.
I can leave, but you guys, you just let me know.
But provided Buddy's okay. You know, provided, like I'm taking one day at a time, just overnight. And he doesn't even have to be, they gave him the choice.
Well, I would want, I would want to do the overnight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I could leave at 4:00.
Okay, let's plan on that then. All right.
And I can pick you guys up, so you don't have to leave cars.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm right across the road, I can meet you on Clay Road.
We've already called to order before our closed meeting, so we're going to go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please join the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, we have two special recognitions. First, we'll hear from Patty Bedborough about an award the Finance Department recently received, and we're also recognizing our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, Dr. Lisa Meredith. So I'm going to first call on Mrs. Bedborough.
Good evening. I would like to call up Brian Whittle, our Director of Finance, Debbie Richardson, our Manager of Payroll, and Kristy Groner, our Manager of General Accounting. This is our 15th year of Parkway receiving the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Accounting, awarded by ASBO International, so Association of School Business Officials. This recognition is for financial reporting excellence in many forms. Certainly, it depends on each and every employee and administrator to make wise financial decisions. It takes integrity of our payroll and benefit processing and approval to be taken seriously. We take general accounting and leadership of budget secretaries extremely seriously as well. On top of that, we meet all the qualifications for the Excellence in Reporting with our history and our statements that are provided. The basics of qualifying for this award is certainly to have a clean or unqualified audit report. The report is then reviewed by peer review. It includes financial statements, statistical data, and what I call the term paper for the financials, the management discussion and analysis. So I would like to present this award to Brian Whittle and his department for everything they have done in order to achieve this award.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have much to say, but really, it's Kristy and Debbie do, you know? They always say you have to have good people around you to do good work, so.
Dr. Marty's going to come to the podium next.
The Board of Education, we have, over the years, have seen a number of wonderful individuals make decisions about retirement or to take different positions. And so this last spring, I was having a great day when Lisa Meredith came to visit me and informed me that she was going to retire. I said, you gotta be kidding me, Lisa. But Lisa has just been a wonderful Assistant Superintendent. So Lisa, do you mind joining me up here? Please, I hope you, is that okay if Grandma comes up? I just want to tell you, Board and our public, that Dr. Meredith has had a profound impact on the students and educators in Parkway. I don't know if you realize, but prior to her role, prior to my coming to Parkway, or actually, in the first year she was in this role, Lisa served as a secondary-level English Language Arts Program Coordinator and took the teachers in that program through a pretty elaborate evaluation that I witnessed when I was visiting as the incoming superintendent. And actually, it was at that time I really was convinced that this was a woman that had a lot of leadership potential. She was very thorough and spoke very, very well. So when we had the opportunity to do candidates for a new Assistant Superintendent, I actually am very proud of the fact that I kind of encouraged Lisa to apply for that position, and she did. And in the spring of 2012, was named the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Accountability. In five-plus years, I would just like to highlight some of the work that Lisa has been involved in and has accomplished. First of all, she has, in many ways, reorganized the entire TLA Teacher Learning Accountability Program and Department. It is, and it wasn't broken, but Lisa really took a look at where we were in the needs and where we were with Project Parkway, and really made it a program and a department that is much more efficient, much more effective in the work. I think she put people and talent in the right place. When opportunity to hire people, I think Lisa did a great job of finding people of great talent and abilities, and I think we have a wonderful department, of which I think Kevin Beckner is going to be the beneficiary of in upcoming years. She has enhanced leadership development of our administrators and teachers on an ongoing basis. For Lisa, professional growth and professional development are prime. She really believes that you have to continue growing, you have to continue being on top of your game. She's had a major investment in Project Parkway. She certainly has worked very much to guarantee a curriculum that is based on current practices. She has enhanced us as a capable, students, let me start over, ensuring that students are capable, curious, confident, and caring in their work. One of the things that I did when she and Chelsea both started was, I said that they had to be connected at the hip, and they had to work very closely, and I think her and Dr. Watson did a great job over the course of Project Parkway 1.0 and certainly leading into 2.0, of really working hard to combine the work that is important both to the academic and the social growth of students. And this is really, I think, symbolized in the collaboration and cooperation of both areas as they move forward. Lisa made equity and excellence a priority, and she led the important implementation of what I think is just an exciting venture, an equal-opportunity schools venture. She made innovation a vital part of her work in TLA, and we could see that particularly in Spark, but so many other areas, online learning, grading and reporting, project-based opportunities, Project Lead the Way, and many, many more. With innovation, Lisa ensured that choice for students would be carried out. And it was Lisa's plan to institute a Director of Choice position, now you're going to hear from Jennifer a little later, that really made that a priority for our work and certainly put the leadership in place to make sure that was going to happen. She has led the investigation into Parkway's approach to personalized learning, which is just underway. Early childhood, which is Lisa's background, has been a priority and is a major focus, and boy, has that been a major area of growth in the district. It has grown in both numbers and locations. It's grown in quality. We have certainly really enhanced the whole approach to early learning birth through kindergarten. She's had significant curriculum update leadership in math, ELA, PE, health, and many other curriculums, touching many curriculums. The new K-5 grading and reporting was a prime work, part of Lisa's work, and I think we have a consistent emphasis now on student growth and better communication with our parents. She has focused on post-secondary work with Maryville, St. Louis Community College, and other post-secondary institutions. As you'll see later, she has worked hard with Jennifer to enhance our summer school and changes to the overall program. It's really led us to grow that program and with greater quality. And before she leaves, we're not going to let her leave until she finishes some work in policy, which is not the most exciting work. I could go on and on, I think I've hit a lot of the high points, but I'm speaking, I know I'm speaking for the Super Ten's Action Team, I think we'd all, they all could speak tonight, I think we'd all have wonderful things to say about Lisa. But I think I would sum it up that Lisa has wonderful leadership skills, she builds collaboration and consensus, she supports the work of the whole district, and she works very hard. She has a wonderful work ethic. And I say that because you would find Lisa, even when a lot of things were going on with her and her family, or with her own, sometimes her own health, she was there, working hard, working from home. there, working hard, working from home, and making Parkway a priority, sometimes to the point where I'd have to say, "Lisa, take care of yourself and your family." She is a wonderful person. She cares deeply about her family, her faith. She cares deeply about this district, and we're going to miss her a great deal. She has built leadership capacity, and I think that's shown in the person who's going to succeed her. Her and Kevin have worked exceptionally well and in this transition exceedingly well, and I'm very, very proud of Lisa. I'm very proud of the work she has done, and I congratulate her and wish her very, very well. But I also want her to continue staying active. She's got way, way too much to still give in this profession, and I know she will stay active in some capacity in education. Lisa, I want to say I love you. I care about the work you've done and want to wish you the best. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We're going to let you... We'll let you compose yourself just a bit, because I know Mrs. Feldman and maybe some other Board members want to say a few words, and then we'll ask you to say a few.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're making it a little harder.
[laughter] You did really well to the end.
Lisa, over the years that we have worked together, you have stood at that podium saying nice things about me a time or two during Board recognitions, and now it's my turn to say some nice things about you.
Water. Good. We didn't know each other very well when you first came into your current position, but I have learned so much from you since. You're a natural-born teacher, challenging me to understand... Ooh, this is hard, to understand the many facets of curriculum. And when you came to a planning meeting with that big piece of folded paper with all those arrows and circles on it, it was this big, and many of you know what I'm talking about, I thought you were nuts.
[laughter]
But once again, you proved that you knew your stuff, and when it came to organizing the department and the coordinators for the 21st Century School District that we needed to be. About three years ago, I was contemplating ending my tenure on the school board, and you invited me along on a field trip to the Blue Valley School District in Overland Park, Kansas, to observe the CAPS program. And I was immediately inspired to throw my hat back into the ring for another term. I owe it all to you.
[laughter]
And a little bit to you. I was completely captivated with the possibilities that experiential learning could provide to our students. And wow, were you right. That program has grown beyond what I thought possible. I'm sorry. What a great way to wrap up your career in Parkway. Your grace under pressure has been evident over the last couple of years when we have faced some difficult situations. I don't think I ever saw you lose your cool, always keeping what is good for students when making recommendations to the board in the forefront of your thoughts. We will miss your kindness and your thoughtfulness. Thank you so much.
Any other Board members?
Few words. Everyone knows I'm one of very few words, and I don't know if I could get through a speech like that. We are losing a tremendous asset to the school district. You have been fabulous. You were one of the first ones that I actually sat with and talked to, and I was a moron when it came to even knowing what it took to run a school district. But you really explained a lot of things in detail in my kind of language and made it so much easier for me and made me feel so welcome. And it was just amazing that you... The caring. You can just tell that you are so passionate and caring about Parkway, and we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't know how you coped so much in five years. It's just amazing. And everything that Dr. Marty mentioned in terms of your accomplishments, we don't realize behind the scenes how much work goes into it. We get the reports. They're polished. They're well-done. They're very effective, and we're very proud of it. But behind the scenes, working as you do with your staff and consensus and cooperation, collaboration is amazing. And we thank you for that, because so much has happened for kids in this district because of you and your team.
I'd like to say, too, that at any time, when I first came onto the board, I, too, was like Kim. I would echo those same words. Help me learn, figure this out. And you sat with me, and anytime I had a question about anything that was upcoming on the agenda or I didn't understand, you took the time to sit and talk with me and offer thorough explanations of everything. And this district indeed owes you a great deal. And not only our district, but you helped us to understand what it means to serve the whole St. Louis metropolitan and city region through our collaborative efforts with Riverview Gardens and Normandy Cooperative Collaboration that we have done. And you always have a can-do attitude of, "We can do this because it's important." And not only is it important for Parkway, it was important for our whole St. Louis area that we help these other students. So thank you for that. You are one of the most caring, compassionate people, and as I like to think that leadership is a trickle-down effect, I'm sure that your compassion and your caring and your knowledge is being passed on to the people that we're going to be following in your footsteps. And for that, I feel very confident that we will be in good hands with your departure. Your family is lucky to get you back, and we wish you all the best.
I just want to say two words that thank you for your service. I know it's been a very short time for me to know you, but we have exchanged a lot of great stuff, and it was very... It was an honor for me to know you. You have so much of energy and passion. The only thing that worries me is, "What are you going to do after that?" So if you decide that you're getting bored and you want to do something, feel free to come back and volunteer with us, and we'll be more than happy to have you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Because Kim kind of leapfrogged me, but that was totally fine, because I did not want to follow that.
[laughter]
But I'd just like to say, to reiterate some of the kind words spoken already, Dr. Marty is very, very correct in saying you are just the greatest teacher. I have learned a lot from you in Project Parkway committee meetings, and I often leave them after you've spoken. And sometimes I'm calling my wife and saying, "Listen to this. Listen to how this just got explained." And it's, you know, totally new and fresh ways that I had never even conceived before. And so it's been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you, and I wish you all the best for the future.
Thank you.
You know, I do really appreciate all the kind words and sentiments that were shared.
The past 11 years in Parkway have just been incredible, and I've been so honored to serve in this district, to serve our students and serve alongside so many great people. The accomplishments that were spoken tonight, though, are not my accomplishments. They're our accomplishments. They're our students. They're our parents. They're our district administrators, our building administrators, Board. You create the environment for us to be able to do our work. Dr. Marty, your focus on mission and vision. You know, it's a team. It's a team. I also have to thank my family who is here tonight, my husband Greg, and two of my two daughters, Amy and Melissa, and they're wonderful children. That's what I'll be doing with my time. And my son couldn't be here tonight, but they helped me maintain balance and focus so that I could serve well here. You know, I really have to give credit. Well, part of what makes it hard to leave is this incredible team that's known as the TLA team. They are such an amazing group of people to serve alongside. They stay focused on what is best for students, but yet continue to think forward. And I'm just so excited to see where Kevin and the team go next, because they are absolutely the finest administrators I've ever worked with. One of my favorite thinkers around education right now is Sir Ken Robinson, and I won't get the quote exactly, but he talks about, "Leadership in education should not be about command and control. Leadership in education should be about climate control, creating a climate that creates possibilities." Board, that's what you do for us. You create a climate that allows us to think about possibilities for each student, and it has just been such a great journey to serve with you and the other Board members I've been able to serve with. I've been blessed, and I am a better person for having spent the past 11 years with the people in this room and with all the other people in Parkway. Thank you. Thank you so much. Parkway proud.
So Lisa just talked about Ken Robinson. Lisa's a reader, endlessly reading. So it's kind of tipping off what's in here, because she needs a place for her books, right? And so Nikki had a great choice of... So this is from all of us to Lisa, because you're going to continue reading. I know you're going to continue to be a learner, and this will give you... It's heavy. Be careful. It's heavy. But Board, thank you so much for those comments. And I know on behalf of our Super Ten Action Team, we're going to miss Lisa and her wisdom. Oftentimes, when we had very tough issues, it was Lisa who helped us through that and looking at all sides. A lot of wisdom with this woman, and again, we're going to miss her. But we know, like so many people, she's not going to be too far away, and we're going to count on her continued friendship. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think I've composed myself. I'd have to get through the next part. 6.0. Oh, and thank you, guys, for coming. It's nice to finally see you. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addendum to agenda item 10.03, approval of personnel items. 6.02, update to agenda item 11.01, adoption of tax rate for 2017, 2018. The presentation was updated due to a typographical error on slide number six. And 6.03, update to 10.05, approval of resolution for sale and issuance of general obligation refunding bonds for Series 2010A. The final bond sale documents were added to the item. 7.0, citizen statements. We only have one speaker tonight, and that's Mr. Mark Siegel. Would you please come to the microphone and state your name and whether or not you're a resident of the district, and please limit your comments to about two to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Mark Siegel, and I live in the Parkway School District. Dear Parkway School Board, I am the proud father of Amalia McCall Siegel, a graduating senior. Senior, you heard from parents of graduating seniors regarding the dates of graduations on Jewish holy days. Please listen to the words you have not yet heard. In very small steps, the Jews were exiled by the Romans. The Greeks, Spanish dashed again. Spain exiled the Jews. Finally, the greatest genocide ever experienced. The Nazi regime programmed, planned, and implemented the death of 6 million Jews. The Nazis destroyed Jewish communities from all of Europe. Can you hear the cries of the martyred Jew? If the Holocaust had never happened, 6 million lost Jews would have grown by more than five generations. Hear the cries from the 6 million dumped into mass and unmarked graves. Think of the repercussions lost with their deaths and the potential of the following generation. Now faced by your understanding of the importance of these holy days, this can be the start of how St. Louis feels they can treat the Jews. We, as a people of faith, can never get back following the commandments of God. Lost experiences of these holy days will cause weeping of the entire Jewish community. Are we going forward, or are we returning to the old ways of discrimination, segregation, and denial of constitutional rights? I beg you to take the high road and support the entire Jewish community. Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Sir Winston Churchill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. You'll receive a reply in writing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. 8.0, approval of agenda, September 27, 2017. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for September 27, 2017?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. 9.0, communications. 9.01, calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 18, 2017, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 p.m. 9.02, Board Liaison Reports. Anyone?
I just had one week to go to the elementary high school. They had the cultural event. It was amazing. There were a lot of different continents and countries. They had set up as a booth, and it was an interesting event to see and visit different cultures and kind of meet the people. So again, thanks to McKelvey for holding these kind of events, and thanks for inviting.
And I would like to report that the Personalized Learning Initiative Group met a couple of weeks ago, and so that effort is ongoing and continuing. We met as a larger group and brainstormed about some of the large, big picture of what PLI will look like. So we're continuing in that effort. And then this morning, Mr. Todd and I attended the Central High School Special Olympics, the opening ceremony and some of the games there. And I just have to say, this is the second Special Olympics that I have attended in Parkway, and this is one of the things I think we do right. It is just so heartwarming to see so many schools come together. There were 331 athletes that showed up from a variety of different schools today, and all of the effort and the endeavors that go through to get the students to participate, and they're in their wheelchairs, the equipment that they have to have. And one of the student athletes that gave a little speech ahead of time, we got done, and we... Mr. Todd and I talked with him, and he said, "I'm so excited." And he said, "I just can't wait for this to start." So we're like, "Okay, go." So it was just so heartwarming to see that true mission of Parkway coming out in our caring. And they ended up rolling this into their day of service. And so the sophomores, the juniors and seniors were the buddies for the Special Olympic athletes. And then the sophomores actually went off campus and participated in a variety of different organizations to provide service to those different organizations. And then the freshmen stayed on campus, I believe, and were being introduced and had different booths and different organizations that they talked with. So it was just an amazing day, and I was just very proud to be part of Parkway today and see all the effort that the students really put into this along with the staff. So thank you.
Debbie?
I was able to attend the Parkway West High 50th Anniversary banquet. I guess that's what it was called, the official name. It was really amazing to see how many graduates showed up. I mean, there were a lot of alumni there, and I sat with this nice couple that graduated in 1973. She brought her yearbook, and it was just amazing, the photos, and she's pointing people out, going, "That's him right here." And so it was really neat to see, and it was neat to... They still had the enthusiasm, and they were all talking about... They still meet regularly, and they all... I mean, they get together. They feel that they're still a family, and I think that is just fantastic. And that speaks highly of Parkway.
I'd like to also comment about Central's Day of Service today. It was really neat to be there. What I thought made the biggest impact on me was how much bigger they have grown in the last couple of years. This is the second year of the Day of Service, and I'm not sure about south or north, but I know the West High Special Olympics, they are limited to the gymnasiums. They haven't gotten as far as creating an entire day. But I know they had staff there today observing, and they are looking to mirror what Central has basically created these last couple of years. So it was really neat to see that, and like Debbie said, it was neat to see a lot of the students of Parkway Central embracing the athletes coming in and truly being buddies with them, truly helping them through the day. I was able to walk around and watch some soccer games and watch some activities in the gym. And so it was a really neat event to be at. I also attended the West ceremonies with Kim, and it was... As an alum, yeah?
Yeah.
And... ceremonies with Kim and it was, as an alum, yeah. And I also went to the carnival that morning. They had a lot of booths that were geared more towards the younger kids. And it was neat to see a lot of our student council kids volunteering there and doing face painting and making cotton candy and just all sorts of things. So it was neat, neat community event. The other thing that I missed, I missed going to, but I did go to, was Friday the 15th when we had to cancel after-school activities. Henry Elementary's plan was to have a 50th anniversary event that day and that got canceled. But interestingly, the parents took it upon themselves to move their whole event, not the building tours, but they had the food trucks that were lined up. They had a bunch of things that were lined up. And they moved it about 200 yards to the nearest subdivision and had several hundred parents and kids all show up at the same time that they were planning on it. And my wife and I went and we got a little bite to eat and we hung out with some of these folks. And they're still doing their, I think they're scheduled tomorrow to do the kickball tournament and everything. But it was neat to see that they just, they just changed on the fly and still wanted to be together as a community. So that was, that was great to see. So.
Mr. Siegel, I'm glad you're still in the room and you can hear this. Last Wednesday night, the Jewish people all over the world celebrated our new year, the year 5778. And I attend United Hebrew congregation right down the street from here. And Thursday morning, we were honored to have Dr. Michael Bogus, who's the principal here at Central Middle, and Dr. Jeremy Mitchell, who's the principal at West High, join us for services. And my rabbi stated that she invited all 52 principals whose children attend United Hebrew's religious school. And we were so honored to have our two Parkway principals there. And I know Dr. McCarthy from Central High attended services at another congregation. And I look forward to seeing him Friday night when he joins us at United Hebrew. But I have to tell you, the looks on the students' faces as they were able to share with their principals what goes on on a day when Jewish students don't come to school in observance of a Jewish holiday. It was really special. And the kids just, they'll never get over that feeling. And it was a real, it's a mitzvah, what these principals did, taking time out of their busy days to come share this experience with their students. And I think, I corresponded with both of them and I think they really enjoyed their experience and they look forward to future invitations. So that was really, really neat. And I was, and the rabbi got up and welcomed them right away before the service began. And God, I was so proud, just so proud to be a part of Parkway. So, okay.
Could I just weigh in? Dr. Watson and Dr. Bicini and several Parkway people were part today of a Character Plus conference that was held at Holiday Inn and over in Sunset. And I just want to tell a little story. One of my first years in Parkway, I went to a Character Plus conference and looked around and there wasn't a lot of Parkway people and there wasn't certainly any Parkway people doing presentations. Today, I think we had no less than maybe, what, 10 presentations by principals and Aaron Chulkey and several of our leaders presenting. And another person from another district came up to me and said, "I don't know if this is the Character Plus conference or the Parkway conference." But we had a lot of, I was just, was very proud to be part of that. And I know Gina and Chelsea share in the pride that we had today for our leaders. And very, very proud of the work that we've done in character education. And certainly, it's wonderful to see our own leaders, principals and others standing up. And we actually had a lot of them doing restorative presentations and really modeling for other school districts. So it was quite a joy.
Okay, we're going to go to 9.03 board subcommittee reports. There are none. 9.04 upcoming subcommittee meetings. The TLA Subcommittee meeting will be held on October 4, 2017 at 4:30 at the Instructional Services Center. Details of the meetings will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 10.0 action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented in the September 27 board materials?
Seven.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries 6-0. 11.0 action items. There are, we are going to do 11.01 adoption of the tax rate. Patty Bedborough, come on down. Are you going to talk some more or are we just going to vote?
Your pleasure. Would you have any questions? Because certainly I could entertain and respond to any.
May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education adopt the tax rates by categories presented above in the blended rate, tax rate for the Parkway School District for 2017, 2018 in the amount up to a blended rate of $4.2549 to be distributed with a special revenue fund rate of 2.4146, general fund rate of 1.3003, capital projects rate of .0500, and debt service fund rate of .4900.
One minute.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum, yes. Mrs. Hopper, yes. Mr. Rethan, Dr. Sieratino, Mr. Todd, Mrs. Feldman.
Yes, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
12.0 policy review. There's none tonight. 13.0 reports. I'd like to call Dr. Jennifer Stanfield, Director of Choice Programs, to give us the 2017 summer school report.
All right. Well, good evening. President Feldman, Vice President Applebaum, members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. As most of you know, my name's Jennifer Stanfield and I serve as the Director of Choice Programs and had the pleasure of overseeing summer school in 2017. And I'm excited to share with you the highlights of our program. Before I get started, I really need to emphasize that the summer school program is so dependent upon the collaboration of many stakeholders among many departments and individuals in Parkway. I would definitely like to thank Ms. Marion Londa, my assistant, who worked tirelessly to support the work and has been a part of summer school for a very long time. So her historical perspective was very helpful. I'd also like to thank the summer school site administrators, teachers, and support staff who helped us serve our students throughout the months of June and July. Lastly, the Parkway Rockwood Community Education Office was instrumental in the implementation of our summer programming in Parkway this year. My position was created in 2016. And at that time, I knew that Michael Cosgrove would be retiring from his role of coordinator of summer school at the conclusion of the 2016 summer session. During the 2016-2017 school year and following that session, I took time to observe, learn, and sought feedback from many stakeholders who were instrumental in the implementation of the Parkway Summer School program. Transition and change is difficult, but it's also an opportunity to reflect on the past and see things through a new point of view. After careful review of feedback from parents and families, administrators, operations, and support staff, the following opportunities emerged as areas of consideration and focus for the 2017 summer school program. Those were online registration for our K8 summer programming, developing consistent processes between the regular school year and summer, eliminating the summer school supply fees at the K8 levels, guaranteeing some elementary summer course offerings across the district, and expanding our summer camp model. As we proceed through tonight's presentation, I'll share an overview of our program followed by the work and impact around these areas of focus. The presentation will conclude with planning considerations for 2018 summer school. This summer, 6,340 Parkway students participated in academic credit recovery enrichment or remedial summer programming. This was an increase of 670 students from 2016. In addition, more than 1,700 students participated in our K8 afternoon camp opportunities. In 2017, the number of students participating in Jump Start to Kindergarten increased by 18.9%, which was more than 80 students. Additionally, students participating in Welcome to Middle School saw a 13.6% increase, which was equivalent to 43 students. Our Maryville College Admissions Program showed significant growth by adding 84 students, which was a 67.7% increase. And we had 22 students graduate as a result of credits earned in summer school. We were also so pleased to see that there was equal representation between our VST students attending summer school, 38%, and our Parkway resident students attending summer school, 39.3%. In 2016, high school summer registration went online using a complex Google form and email response system, thanks to Bill Bass. Although there were challenges associated with this process during the first year, the feedback was positive and we learned that parents appreciated the opportunity to register for summer programming online. In September of 2016, a team of summer school stakeholders met to review Elio, which was the online registration system utilized by the Parkway Rockwood Community Education Program. During this team's review of the system, we learned that many Parkway families had already established accounts with Elio and they were familiar with the system. In addition, we had the opportunity to leverage local experts in the Parkway Rockwood Community Ed office as we worked to shift our registration process online. And lastly, the reporting options for Elio created efficiencies as our schools began scheduling students. As a result of this review, the recommendation was made that we should proceed in partnering with Parkway Rockwood Community Ed to move our online registration using Elio starting in 2017. On the day summer school registration opened, the Elio system unfortunately did go down for approximately 18 very long minutes. Once the program went back up, the interest exceeded the number of seats available and wait lists became heavily populated. Administrators quickly responded by adding additional seats in classes at all K8 summer sites. But it did not come without challenge. It is important to note that schools have long received more applications than available seats for high-demand classes. That's not really a new problem. The difference this year was that our online system made the waitlist process more transparent for families, which caused concern and stress with regard to successfully enrolling their children. Fortunately, the vast majority of our interested students were able to slide into those newly created seats and we were able to get all of those students placed and informed of their placements prior to the summer school season, starting on June 5. Feedback from summer school administrators indicated varying processes between the regular school year and summer school often caused confusion. That said, the group recommended we look at developing some efficiencies in the areas of payroll and substitutes. During the fall of 2016, our team worked closely with human resources to streamline our payroll and wages, resulting in a savings of over $22,000. Our team also reviewed our substitute practices and determined that creating consistency and utilizing Kelly subs in summer would help to create consistent sub request process. And also, they could assist in cleaner reporting of when our teachers were outside of the classroom. It allows us to track teacher absence data as we work to reduce the number of teachers who are away from classrooms during those summer weeks. During 2016, we also made the decision to eliminate the supply fees for the 2017 summer school session in order to remain consistent with state guidelines. Each year, Parkway invest funds in summer school in order to ensure all students can access quality learning experiences during the summer months. In 2017, our increase in summer school enrollments actually resulted in a decrease in per-member costs. In other words, in 2017, by becoming more efficient, we served more students while decreasing costs per student. Based on stakeholder feedback, it was evident that developing some consistent course offerings at the elementary level was an area of focus for 2017. Families were seeking more consistent offerings across the district and our administrators were seeking strategies for recruiting more Parkway teachers to teach summer school. Our current model required teachers to propose a course at the time that they applied for summer school. And we had a lot of teachers that were interested in teaching but couldn't necessarily come up with a concept or a full course idea at the time of the application. That said, a team of elementary summer administrators collaboratively developed a list of course offerings based on historical enrollment data and student interest. Teachers were paid to write curriculum for these courses and that curriculum was shared with teachers of summer school as they were hired. We also continued to accept course proposals for those teachers who wanted to offer site-specific specialized courses so that we could provide them with the opportunity to still pursue their interest in what they taught in the summer. Based on our teacher feedback, we do have opportunities to further develop the strengths of those courses and continue to offer them in 2018. In 2016, we offered six tuition-based camps at various locations throughout the district. Tuition is charged for camps since they are not reimbursable programs by the state. In an effort to reduce the cost of moving students from summer sites to camp and also to ease some of the fears of parents for having some of their little ones being moved from building to building, we proposed a model that would offer a rotating schedule of week-long afternoon camps at each K8 summer site during the weeks of summer school. Parkway Rockwood Community Ed agreed to assist in the development, oversight, and coordination of these camps. As a result, 10 tuition-based camps were offered to students in first through eighth grade. Adventure Club facilitators and staff members assisted with the supervision of students, administration of camps, and aftercare. The cost of a one-week camp was $115 and aftercare was an additional $50 for interested families, which was extremely competitive given the market. From 2016 to 2017, student participation in camps nearly tripled, which allowed us to meet family needs while also offsetting the cost of our summer programming. Upon the conclusion of summer school, we've worked to gather feedback from internal and external stakeholders while also examining best practices of summer programming in other districts. Our first priority will be to adjust our planning timelines so we can open summer school registration in February. This will allow us to remain consistent with community-based camps and other programming while also providing our summer site administrators, nurses, and staff time to adequately plan for the students who are coming to us in June. In order to reduce the traffic on our online registration system, we are also planning to stagger our registration times by level. We're working to identify and develop guaranteed summer courses at the middle school level and also looking for opportunities to improve our current elementary course offerings. This will ensure that we are continuing to offer high-quality learning experiences for all of our summer participants. As we continue to seek opportunities for serving our students and providing choices, we're looking at opportunities to expand our virtual and/or blended opportunities at the high school level. And also, we are looking to streamline parent communication processes and consistent timelines across all summer sites. Lastly, we're planning to evaluate summer school support staff budgets and class sizes to ensure the needs of our students are being met. As I conclude tonight's presentation, I want to once again thank you all for your support of our Parkway summer program. We are fortunate to provide families with access to high-quality learning experiences during the summer months in such a comprehensive manner. We're committed to consistently seeking feedback and making recommendations for enhancements to our program that will truly allow our students to pursue a personal direction based on an understanding of their strengths, interests, talents, and abilities. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
My kids were recipients of, you know, they all, they did summer school every year, except for their senior year, obviously. But it helped them. They, you had, I mean, there's a lot of variety of choices for them, too. I mean, even first, second, third grade, there were plenty of choices. And when I was in school, summer school meant for bad kids. But now, it's like fun. It's something for them to do and they're getting more of their education. It keeps them going. It keeps their brains going for the summer. So kudos to you for a job well done. I mean, I think the summer school program's amazing.
Thank you. I think that the job that you and Mr. Cosgrove have done at Maryville is absolutely amazing. I just, I hope that the capacity is never full for that program because I think it really gives kids a giant step ahead in preparing for college. So that's great. My question was, when do the teachers apply to work in summer school?
So historically, those postings have gone live in December this year. Actually, the postings will go live October 15.
And that's so that you can have everything ready for February.
It will also allow us, by having students register earlier, to determine whether or not we need additional staff. And it gives us a little bit more time to work and get some of our teachers secured for, especially some of our high-need positions.
Right. And so then my follow-up question is, is do we ever turn away teacher applicants? Or is there a shortage of teachers or is there an abundance of teachers?
So we post internally first and then a month later, it goes external. So I would say most internal teachers are typically placed. And sometimes we have external applicants that might not find placement.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes?
No, go ahead.
So demand changes every year. So...
So, are we doing some kind of assessment after the summer school to make sure that, okay, the next year, we plan accordingly to adjust or, you know, provide the courses depending on the demand?
Yes. So, we are, you know, we look at all of our enrollment numbers and actually this year, we have our first summer school kickoff meeting October 10th. Some of our administrators got the invitation earlier this week and I think I might have made some of their heart stops stop momentarily, but yes, they will actually receive a report that shows which courses, how many sections of each, what their overall numbers were so that they can start having an idea in terms of planning. And then we also invite the planning administrators from the previous years for those elementary models where we, where that rotates and so they can have conversations about which courses may have been difficult to find teachers for. And then also, we are looking to develop a survey, probably to go out at the conclusion of this year in terms of what courses people would be interested in seeing more of as we determine kind of a process for introducing new courses over time.
Thank you.
Our children, on and off over the years, have always done summer school and really appreciate the effort. I know it's a lot of work to put this together and I was one of those moms that at 7:00 AM had her little pointer posed, ready to sign up for registration. So, you know, we went through that whole process. So, I greatly appreciate all the effort of everybody that had to endure online registration for the first time. So, thank you for doing that, though. I think the online registration is a wonderful addition. I think it's very helpful instead of having to drop off your form or sit in a long line and hope that you're in the pool of the first person that can get into that class. So, I think this is a huge, huge improvement to be able to sign up for summer school. One, a couple of the questions that I have, and this is actually something that Dr. Meredith and I had discussed, is when we look at students graduating and trying to get their credits in, one of the gaps that I came across was with Algebra I at West High School. And if a student is not doing well in that course or fails, the offering for summer school is only the second semester of Algebra I. And then there, the other opportunity to take algebra courses is only if you did not fail algebra. And so, I'm trying to understand if there's a way to help students that are struggling with algebra in the summer to be able to take some kind of a remedial course to help them or maybe not even remedial, but something to help them. And then I noticed this, you know, I think we could translate this into some of the other core courses too, with reading or science, because then if they, if they've got the summer opportunity to be able to help them to get back up to where they need to be to then start the fall, it could be tremendous opportunity for these students. But it seems like there's a gap there to help students who really need help with math to be able to get the help over the summertime because then there's nothing that they can take. So, then a parent has to then maybe go on their own to help them to go elsewhere to find help with that. So, I just want to put that out there.
Yes, we'll definitely look into that and I know we are doing and having a lot more conversations just within TLA, within all of our curriculum coordinators to look at, how can we utilize summer as an opportunity for preparation? So, we had a lot of, you know, AP prep classes as we were moving students through equal-opportunity schools to give them time and support during the summer to kind of get ready. And so, we're starting to look at where are these opportunities or gaps where we could provide some summer programming to support students as they transition back into that fall semester.
Thank you. The other issue I wanted to mention is I was wondering if you get much feedback from the teachers in needing to have more of the special school district case managers during the school, during summer school? Because right now, my understanding is that case managers are not on hand during summer school time. There's some superficial SSD support as needed, but there's not that full-fledged, you know, when students have an IEP, if they're not extended year eligible, that they're not getting that case management work there. But yet, they're still needing to go to school and have an IEP, but who's overseeing that to make sure that it's happening? And then our general ed teachers are there trying to enforce and ensure that the IEPs are being adhered to. So, I'm just wondering if teachers have, you know, concern with that, if they're able to manage it, or if we need to look at trying to bring in more SSD services in summer school.
So, we, a couple of years ago, this topic came up. And so, we, last year, at every summer meeting, we had a period of time where Alyssa Gratz and Bobby Ziegring and some of our area coordinators were there to talk about how do we support our students who do not qualify for extended school year but do have needs during summer? And so, we have made a commitment on our end to look at how we can utilize our support staff budgets in a need-based manner. So, for example, sometimes we have kids that need additional support and so if we know that coming in, then we can plan for that accordingly. And that is another reason why there's benefit to us moving back registration till February because it gives us eight more weeks to really be able to team with case managers and area coordinators in each of the schools to look at our lists and to see what do those students need and then also how we can better prepare our teachers so that they can serve those students and help them with those goals throughout the summer. So, it's an ongoing conversation. I don't believe we've arrived, but I think that we are working much more strategically and collaboratively than we ever have before and we already have plans for 2018 to even strengthen that partnership even more.
Okay. And thank you for moving the registration to February. I think that really helps to do better coordination when families are trying to plan their summer and all the other opportunities that are out there, you know, just to see what's going to be available and the timing of that. So, I think this is going to be a nice improvement as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We always wonder about transition and we all know that Mike did such a wonderful job and I just want to congratulate you and all involved in building upon what has happened in the past and making it so outstanding and so successful.
Thank you.
And growing the numbers at the same time. It's exciting to look forward to what you're going to be doing in the future as well.
Yes.
I know we have, we have Leader and me in elementary and we've got some character development classes in middle school. Have we looked at any type of character development class for the high school level?
Not specifically yet. Some of our high schools may, we spent a lot of time on our K-5 last year and then this year, middle school. And so, we're consistently looking at those opportunities. One thing I will say is that at the middle school level, when we sat down and started looking at what courses should be guaranteed across the board, when they heard about the Northeast Middle Class, which I think, were you there with us for that visit?
Yeah.
Yes. They all are looking into maybe having something similar in all of our middle schools. So, that's really exciting. And so, I think that that is eventually going to make it to our high schools. And we've even talked about, we've had different questions about just thinking creatively about what would a Spark summer experience look like? What would a service learning experience look like? So, just how can we be really thoughtful about embedding some of those, you know, experiential, service-based, character leadership-based opportunities for students in the summer?
I just want to just say that we're probably pretty rare in Missouri to have the kind of program we have in the summer program, even in the metropolitan area. So, we're certainly fortunate and we have to give certainly our financial people, because this is Jennifer talked about, it's an added expense, but we're really doing well with the count. We do get some state aid given the count. So, I think, want to just point that out. And then secondly, I just really am excited about the growth of our camp program because our summer school program is pretty limited to three weeks for the elementary and then the high school program is six weeks?
Five.
Five weeks. But the camp program allows us to really give more opportunities. And I do believe that, and this is, this register, registration is important because I think a lot of parents look at the summer in terms of weeks, you know, this week is this camp. So, they look at that opening and say, oh, maybe there's something for me in the Parkway program. So, I'm really excited about that because it engages our students. We all know that learning should not stop during summer and, you know, the idea of having year-round school is certainly a topic that people engage in. But this is really, when you think about 8,000 students that have engaged in summer school in some fashion, I think it's just exciting that we have helped keep that brain active with some new programs, some exciting things, a little bit different during the school year. So, I think you're right, Sam. We've got great leadership in the past and I think we got some wonderful leadership going forth and I want to echo Jennifer's, thanks to a lot of our principals who really step up and really help us really continue to work as well as our staff.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Dr. Chelsea Watson is going to come talk to us about Project Parkway 2.0 overview.
Good evening. President Feldman, Vice President Applebaum, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the past, a little bit about the present, and take you into the future as we think about upcoming board members. So, do you remember this? This was our mission way back when and it's nice to know that I've done some activities with the Steering Committee, our assistant principals and our principals to see who can remember the mission associated with the torch. And guess what? People kind of remember there's something about every day in that mission. And so, that's a nice thing because, as you know, that mission was not about the kids. It was about the adults. But to take us back again, Project Parkway, we started a new governance process in 2009 where we had over 400 volunteers to help us think about what the future of the Parkway School District should look like. And we decided a good way to figure that out was to plan backwards from mission. And so, after lots of work, a new mission was developed. This was key from the work around Project Parkway. It focused on students, student outcomes. It focuses on why we exist as a school district, our Parkway mission. And so, during that time, our mission drove everything that we did, unlike any mission Parkway had ever had before. We lived it. We continue to live it. So, as we came to the end of that strategic plan, as you all know, we went on listening tours. Seven key questions, 113 focus groups, 1,100 voices heard from focus groups in the survey. Our key findings were recorded and then we started thinking strategically about what does our future look like? What does our community want our future to look like for our students? And so, based on the feedback of the listening tours, on June 8th, 2016, the Board of Education approved a new mission by adding the word "caring." We also updated our vision statements at that time by adding "each" instead of "all." And so, this is where we landed. After the mission approval, the goal leaders continued revising their goals, drafting new goals, thinking about measurable objectives. And on December 14th, 2016, the Parkway Board of Education approved these three new goals along with measurable objectives. So, let's pause. A lot of work has occurred since 2009 and we have a lot to celebrate based on the awesome work of our school administrators, our teachers, our community, our board, and most importantly, our students. Not going to read all of these, but just think. And even as we transitioned to Project Parkway 2.0, we didn't stop working. We continued moving forward and there are more celebrations as we continue thinking about what's most important in Parkway, our students. And we have some ongoing efforts. And some of these efforts and work are based on work we started with Project Parkway 1.0, if you will. And just because we've moved to a new strategic plan does not mean that the work stops. There's work we still need to continue from the work we began under our other strategic plan. And so, where are we today? We have three new goals. We have a goal around students and Dr. Marty mentioned earlier, putting Goal 1 together as we think about serving students in their social, emotional well-being as well as thinking about academics. Instead of having three goals, we have one. Work a little bit smarter and not harder. And Dr. Beckner, Kevin Beckner and Gina Pacini are overseeing Goal 1. And you have seen the six measurable objectives, but just as a reminder, Goal 2, Amy Joyce and Kevin Beckner will oversee the work around Goal 2 along with five measurable objectives. Our staff goal. And our last goal is around our resources. Patty, Bedborough, and Amy Joyce will oversee the work around Goal 3 and those specific measurable objectives. Since the approval of the goals and the measurable objectives, our leaders have finalized the key indicators and the specifics around some of those measurable objectives. We have some Parkway studies, advisories, action teams. All have been identified to help support the work of our strategic plan of Project Parkway 2.0. The leaders of these goals will spend time with each and every one of you at an upcoming board meeting to talk about the current reality and the future of the work around the goal. So, October 18th, you will hear an update as to where we are with Goal 2. November 15th, Goal 3. And in the new year, which sounds so far away, but it really isn't, in January, you will hear an update around Goal 1.
I love Project Parkway. And that's how I became introduced to the school district was through this endeavor and being there with all the parents that came and the staff and administration. And it's just so wonderful to see that it's continuing and being taken seriously. And that, when I was on a focus group, when we were trying to find a new superintendent before Dr. Marty came, that was one of my preferences, is that we have a superintendent that would stay focused with Project Parkway because so much progress had been made and I felt that was a very important endeavor and especially just the way that it was structured to get all the input. So, thank you and thank you to Dr. Marty to continue to support that effort. And it's nice to see it narrowed down to three goals and how this has been reorganized a little bit like that. It kind of helps us really hone in on what we're trying to concentrate on better. So, for me, I just feel like it's just spot-on with what we're trying to do in Parkway. So, thank you.
I can't help but just hope on that a bit because Kevin Beckner, Jason Rooks, Bill Bass and I were just at a conference in Indianapolis on Future Ready Schools. And one of the things that, you know, Project Parkway is really our work. And there was a couple of groups there that were so excited to go back and kind of initiate this, Future Ready Schools. And we were having discussions with other districts and we're honestly kind of cautious and be careful because, you know, you can go back and just institute a lot of things. Project Parkway is our focus. Things like Future Ready, Equal Opportunity Schools, all become part of Project Parkway. So, I just can't help but comment, Debbie, you're right. Project Parkway is our focus and things that are happening always have to kind of fit into Project Parkway, whether it's, you know, the character. I mean, you get so easy to track it and come up with a new initiative and that just confuses your public and confuses your employees. And so, we, staying focused is really kind of prime and we're always, I'm reminded because sometimes I'm the guy that wants to, you know, and they always, no, no. My team will always say, no, don't get us distracted. We got to focus on what's important. So, thank you for mentioning that.
You know, we talk about how the mission drives our work and just the other day, I was on a conference call. I'm on the committee to, for the Central Office Administrators Conference. And so, I volunteered to facilitate a session because they were asking for volunteers for all the sessions and somebody said, oh, no, 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 you're from Parkway. Can you please facilitate the strategic planning session? Because- Because we've heard such and such. And I said, absolutely. So, word gets out, as you know, about the fine work that everyone here in Parkway does, and it's just an honor to be a part of the work.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
14.0 work session, there's none tonight. 15.0 call for special meeting, once again, there's none. 16.0 next scheduled closed session. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Monday, October 9, 2017, at 6:30 PM at Parkway's Administrative Center. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 17.0 recess, 18.0 closed session. We concluded our closed session prior to our meeting. 19.0, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned.